We're rolling downhill?
I don't know how we're gonna roll. We'll see how it goes. Okay. All right. This is Monday, August 27, 2018. It's 4:30 PM and this is a work session. Good night, everybody. Or good evening, rather. We're gonna roll right downhill tonight. First is a proclamation. National Library signup month. Ron DePree will be handling that. Number two is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 105 Garbage and Solid Waste and Chapter 106 Collection of Solid Waste of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. First reading on that, Mr. Fiddy.
The amended, proposed amended ordinance they have before you was worked on between myself, the city manager, and the city's attorney. Basically, the changes that were made were to recognize, number one, that the carts or the containers, as the word is used in the ordinance, is going to be supplied by the city rather than the resident pass programs. It's been the resident that provides the container. We're going to the cart, so the city's gonna be providing the container. So the language under prohibited practices in item number one and number four basically recognized, again, that it is a city-owned cart and as such, there are certain conditions pertaining to that cart. Under the collection services, the second page is where much of the language change is. Talks about the fact that we have 35, 65, 95 gallon carts. It also indicates that if it's not inside a city-provided cart, you'll be using a bag, which requires a tag. It takes away the use of them using a 33 gallon can as they have in the past. They have to use either a city-provided cart or a bag with a trash tag on it. Under containers, there's language that reiterates that, again, that the cart, the container must be provided by the city. And if something is not within the city-provided cart, it has to be in a bag with trash tags. On the third page, let's see here, again, it does talk about, in number five, it talks about that, you're talking about garbage material. There are definitions in the ordinance. Those aren't changing and garbage pertains to food-related type materials. It talks about, in number five, about being contained in plastic bags that are strong enough and leak-proof and so on and so forth. And reiterates that the lid's supposed to be fully closed. Under collection fees, you passed, or you adopted a resolution here a few weeks back that set fees. Although the resolution that we passed did not contain, in bullet number one of 106.06 collection fees, it talks about including any fees for replacement of lost or stolen carts or changing of cart sizes by the resident customer. We did include an exchange fee of $35, but that resolution did not include anything about the cost. I know that we've talked about that if somebody reports a stolen cart, that the city would replace that cart free of charge the first time. I don't know if there was a lot of discussion about the second and forthcoming, so I'm not sure when, if and when, we would have that discussion as far as whether there would be a charge at some point about a missing cart. And then lastly, 106.08 Reduced Base Fee Under Property Tax Credit Program. That language was deleted from the proposed garbage ordinance.
Okay. Questions? Quest away.
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Well, I think as far as having the conversation about at what point in time do we start to charge for replacement carts? I looked at a couple of the other communities and they seem to allow the first one to be free and then every subsequent one to be charged, the actual cart, the real cost of the new cart. Is that something that we feel needs to be added to this at this point in order to move it forward instead of coming back around and doing this again in six months?
The language in the ordinance allows that to occur. The fee to be set would be by resolution.
Okay.
And so we, and I think that that's something for the next council meeting, that we will try to have a resolution brought forward to have a discussion about implementing that. And it's, that is pretty much where we're looking at bringing forward, that first one to be free and then charged for the subsequent ones. And I don't know what the fee would be. My assumption would be somewhere in the 50s, maybe $60 range. We need to talk about it.
Right.
Our base costs is, we need to even talk about as we move forward what our subsequent orders are gonna be. Because we're buying in bulk right now, so we have a different rate and we'll be paying over time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Don.
Number three is public hearing in consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for use of fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex, continued from the August 20th, 2018 city council meeting. Mr. Tisland?
Yeah, this was continued. We had some further discussion on some of the points and items within the agreement. Just in summary, this is a use agreement for use of the three practice fields at the south end of the Burlington Recplex as shown on the map there. This original agreement is for a five-year term and then maybe renewed by mutual consent for an additional term not to exceed five years with a contribution fee, effective contribution fee of $2,000 per year in the form of cash or mutually approved donations of equipment at the reclex or mutually approved facility improvements at the reclex that are first approved by the reclex manager or director. Under this agreement, the total fee CISA would incur for the initial term would be $10,000 with up to $10,000 if an additional fee is extended. Again, that can be cash or, as discussed, approved donations and improvements at the reclex. CISA would have first priority with respect to use of the fields with the exception of scheduled tournaments from Thursday through Sunday if needed. Some responsibilities, Burlington will provide all field maintenance, mowing, turf care, irrigation maintenance, lighting maintenance, and goal maintenance for the fields and will move goals as needed, empty trash cans, et cetera. If there's items that complaint arises as to the conditions, Burlington would implement within 14 days of notice plan to address those items. If there's large items that are not currently budgeted, then those should be incorporated into the schedule and budget as allowed and appropriate. CISA is responsible for keeping the fields in good condition, picking up after itself following practices. Lights, so in addition to the $2,000 annually or $10,000 for the five-year term, a $500 annual payment for lights would be included for each season and the season's July 1st through June 30th. If they're left on after scheduled uses, an additional fee of $20 per hour could be charged to CISA. Parking, can park as directed in, under item 13, we're looking at making some changes to parking in that area so that may impact or change what some of the parking allotments are there. Will have insurance, no less than a million each occurrence, $2 million annual aggregate that they already have insurance, so do not have an issue with that. Termination, this agreement may be terminated by either party for cause. That would be material breach of the contract or agreement. And then they did have proposed alternatives for the term. Under this term, as council discussed, would be a five-year term with a mutual consent to renew for an additional five years. Two of the alternatives were proposed based on contributing $20,000 within the first three years of the agreement. On the last page of your agreement, following the signature page, is the first alternative on page 26 of the packet here. This would provide that if they contribute $20,000 to Burlington as approved within the first three years of the agreement, that the agreement shall automatically be extended for an additional five years from the date of donation. So that could make that an automatic six to eight-year agreement if $20,000 is contributed. They've also proposed alternative three that's not shown just after the packet went out, that if $20,000 is donated within the first three years of the agreement, the agreement shall be automatically extended to June 30th, 2028. So that would be an effective 10-year agreement automatically if they contribute that $20,000. So that, those were proposals from CISA. As shown in your packet, the term is the five-year with five-year renewal. They may have additional input or discussion on that.
Do we have anything else that needs to be said?
I mean, the whole reason we were doing a five-year was to make sure that we were covering our costs in the event that we had an increase within that five-year period, right?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
But both of the alternatives really defeat that purpose.
Yeah, I'm, I'd take a five with a five-year renewal. That would be where I'm gonna be on it. You know, assuming everything goes well, and so far it has, it should go through smooth sailing, you know. I, I'm just not comfortable locking us in more than that timeframe for a period of time.
I'd be okay doing a 10-year agreement as long as we have the option to review...
That's basically, we're dealing with a five with a five-year option.
Hear me out. If we did a 10-year agreement and then the only thing that we're allowed to change at the five-year mark is to reevaluate an increase, somehow we gotta, if there's an overall cost to us, whether it's fertilizer or it's labor or there's some unforeseen expense that's related to those fields specifically...
Yeah, you could have a, you could have a national wage increase. So I think five years is, max I'd go with a five-year. The gist is there for your five-year, for your automatic renewal, everything's fine. But I wouldn't be comfortable going beyond five, five with a five-year renewal. That's where I'm at.
That's where I am.
So we're not doing the alternatives, right? Is that what we're coming back to?
Can I give a comment?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Doug Ziegler, 2534 Cliff Road. The reason we talked about this, basically the same thing we've talked about in the past, any improvement out there is gonna be more than $10,000.
Right.
Okay? So we were gonna have a hard time putting $20,000 into an improvement with a five-year deal. So if it's a five-year deal, you'll probably get $2,000 a year and we won't do any improvements. If it's, because if we go in and let's say two years we put $20,000 in and in five years there's no agreement, we basically paid $4,000 a year. So we have a $4,000 a year contract. So we're sitting here saying, all right, improvements, let's put in within the three years, right? You guys get the time value of money. We put it in there, you get the benefit for a long term. Otherwise, we can just sit to the end and pay $2,000 a year. You guys can do what you want with $2,000 a year, but you're not gonna get a big chunk at one time to do a large improvement.
So what were the improvements that you guys were planning on doing?
Well, there's been several discussions. I mean, we would like ideally right now to light one of the back fields. Field five does not have lights. That would be our intent. Obviously, that has to be agreed upon with the reclex. They've also come and talked about potentially another concession stand out back. You're not gonna build that for $10,000. You're not gonna do more irrigation out there or talk at one time about fencing that area. You're not gonna do that for $10,000. And we know the budget's tight, so how do you get those programs and those projects done without a big infusion of cash? Well, it's gonna be probably $20,000 no matter what you do. We know the lights already are anywhere from $16,000 to $20,000, just that alone. So if we want that project to happen, somebody has to pay for it. We're willing to pay for it, but if in five years the agreement ends, we just paid $4,000 a year.
Okay, so you're wanting, you're wanting the 10, you're saying?
We want the 10. We want the 10 and we wanna say, all right, we will do this, we'll invest, but we want the agreement to basically reflect the cost that we're putting into the complex.
Did we come to a conclusion as to whether or not we were going, because they're paying for, they're paying a flat fee right now. You guys are paying a flat fee right now, right?
No, we're not paying anything right now.
Well, I think they're...
That's it. They were paying...
And that was a...
Right.
One-time payment annually, right?
For the lights?
Yeah.
We're getting billed. It averages $500 a year.
Okay, but you're looking for that to go away in this agreement?
No, $500 is in there still.
Okay, got put back in.
Correct.
Jimmy?
$500 plus, there's a separate fee for hours over...
Correct. If it's our fault and we leave the lights on. And we also have an agreement in there, too. Let's say we do light the back field that, and it incurs more costs to the city, that during that time we negotiate, like, again, the increase in lighting fees to accommodate that extra electricity. For instance, you know, if you do the next field, maybe it's $750 a year for the additional electricity for that field. So if it's a improvement we recommend the city agrees to and it costs you more, that gets negotiated in the agreement for the project.
Jim, we're staff on this.
You guys have been working on this, sir?
Yeah, we've been working on it. I think originally when we started off, I know they wanna see improvements back there, but looking at how to balance the reclex budget a little bit more so that where we originally had a fee structure put in place, they came with a donation aspect that was something that they could easily, easier raise those funds than have it come out of an operating budget, but then making sure it's something that's benefit to the reclex as a whole and not just for CISA individually.
So what, one of the things that I'll point out with that in terms of the, I mean, is you talk about the alternative potentially being $2,000 a year. From operational standpoint, is that an issue for you if it was the $2,000 cash as opposed to an in-kind capital purchase?
No, that would be a benefit to us operationally. I mean, it's 2,000 to 2,500 annually just for fertilizer and seed for those fields. Granted, they're not the only ones that use it. We have some other tournaments. They are the primary user back there.
Now, and at the same time, we recognize the insulation of the lights is a big deal and if that can be done, that's great. Are those the tournament-grade lights that...
That would be something we'd have to have conversation on. What's the use beyond CISA for drawing in tournaments or having these overnight fields? Is that the best location? Is it upgrading some other ones? Is it somewhere else on the, on the facility as a whole?
And we're open to all those discussions. We just know, you know, one of the tournaments we ran, we now have, it's a night tournament, right? We run up till midnight. We need more lit fields, even the ones we run that don't go that late. We need another lit field so we can get more teams, more entries. We just see the benefit there.
I know you guys gave a presentation a while back. How many tournaments do you put on a year?
We do two.
You do two tournaments?
Yep.
And what is SEC paying right now? Now, I know there's a difference. They're not using as many fields, there's, and they're not there the entire year, but what are they paying?
They're around 6,500 annually and they are internal to these outside fields primarily that are a little better quality type fields.
Okay. So I guess what, looking beyond just a $20,000 commitment, is there some magic thing that can be done out there in order to perhaps even entice another tournament or larger tournaments?
Well, we run the largest tournament in basically eastern Iowa. I mean, until you get up to Cedar Rapids and you get up to the Tomb up there, they have four times the amount of fields. And you're probably saturating the market with two tournaments. We just did the second one again this past spring. We implemented another one to bring more money to Burlington. So as far as outdoor tournaments, it's tough, but we're also implementing more leagues with the reclex and adult leagues and those kind of things. So, but a large tournament, no, we're maxed out at two.
And Eric, from a staff's perspective, outside of lighting, what would be the ideal project out there or what do you feel like would maximize the opportunity that exists out there?
That's something we'd have to sit down and, I mean, we've talked about the concession restroom area that would service more of the soccer fields to the northwest of the existing facility and in this area where the soccer areas are. Fencing this in would be ideal. Providing lighting on some of those other fields as well as some of these back fields. I know we only have one, just the combo fields, the only permanent lit field right now, but if we wanna have some of these later evening or fall tournaments, then maybe some of these fields on the north. Granted, these back here, there's two that are already lit. So there's just some different options there, but we wanna make sure it's something that was an improvement for the overall reclex and, not to take away from CISA, but we wanna make sure it benefits tournaments, not just individual practices or training as well.
Okay, and then...
Well, so you're, excuse me a second. So your fear is you guys are gonna put money in and then we're gonna tell you five years and we're gonna walk.
You bet.
Right?
You bet.
So, I mean, is there, is there a way that we can account for that as, like in a bank and comes up with a five-year renewal? Because I've had leases with buildings, you know, it's an automatic renewal in five years. The only time it ever is not renewed is when someone has a problem.
Correct.
To our point, I think our largest concern was the fact that if we saw an increase in the cost, that we can't account for it over a 10-year period. I mean, you understand that.
Oh, I understand that. I think we gotta think about, so if we put $20,000 into it, what additional costs is generated from that investment? You got, for instance, you put a concession stand back in there. How much more concessions do you sell that would not be there before us? I think anything that benefits from that $20,000 investment is probably gonna far exceed any additional cost to mow and maintain those back fields.
And I agree with you, but the only thing, I think it moves back to my first point when this topic first came up, is what if we do do a 10-year agreement? What, we put some kind of cap in there or some kind of reevaluation of our fixed costs at that five-year period and try to adjust that into there if necessary? And even cap it, 3%, 5%?
Well, we talked about it first. We're fine if you're saying, let's do a 10-year and there's a revaluation five years with a cap of the maximum increase.
And that's what I'm talking about. That way you've got your 10-year commitment.
You would, it's the same problem, though it's a 10-year with, you know, if you did a five-year break...
Just on our fixed costs, we would, we would have to reevaluate...
Yeah, if it's, you're saying, Matt, if it's $2,000 a year, after year five, there's a 5% increase or something like that.
And we've got a $500 increase in our costs, let's figure out how we can, I mean, you guys would ultimately see a minor increase at that five-year mark.
As long as we know now going in what the cap would be.
Right, exactly. And then that alleviates my concerns as far as making sure that, I mean, Eric, what kind of increases have we had in costs on those fields over the last five or 10 years?
Well, it's been a lot of increase just because they are maintained a little higher quality now.
I mean, it was a dirt patch.
Five years ago, we had no costs.
Okay. And this is that.
Yeah, but what about the cost of fertilizer, et cetera? Do we know about the cost of the increase on those for the...
We budgeted 2% increase on all our commodities.
So if we did five years, they'd be looking at a 10% increase on that, which is 200 bucks.
But we're, if you're just, separate conversation, if you're just looking at maintenance cost on this now, it's 2,500 just for fertilizer and seed, not staff or equipment or anything else.
No, I understand that.
And you're still dealing with a contract that this is much cheaper than what you're charging the other entities for, I mean, they're all fields out there. I mean, you have a little bit different schedules, but this would still be on a comparable basis, significantly cheaper than what you're charging to other entities. So part of your discussion, I mean, if you're gonna make, if you're gonna make a discussion about five years versus 10 years, part of you is, part of that is making a reevaluation of what's going on with the dynamics of the other contracts and do we have flexibility to adjust it to, or, I mean, you may not want to, but at least it gives you that option to make it adjust to the others. If you don't wanna have that option, that's fine, but that is part of the reason why you talk about a five versus a 10-year contract.
I'm comfortable with the five. With the 10, it has nothing to do, I see what you guys are doing. I think it's, I think it's great. I just have an issue doing a 10-year contract with anybody for, there's just so many variables, so many things that can happen within, within five or 10, within 10 years. I'm definitely comfortable with the five and the two, obviously. If there's, if there's something we could do with the verbiage on the, that satisfies everybody with the 10, recheck him, but I just think it's kinda semantics, but...
Well, I think the return for the city is significantly better with the capital improvement on the up, on the front end.
Well, I hope so.
But that's not gonna happen if we offer a five.
Correct. I mean, you just asked a question right now. Would irrigation have been done if, on those back fields, if we had a term limit on a great, I mean, our standing agreement way back in the day we did that was, hey, these fields aren't used anyways. You guys pay the irrigation. We paid that cost. We didn't pay rent, right? The lights, we paid that cost. All that stuff was way, significantly cost more than $10,000. That would never have happened if we're sitting there going, in three years, we may not be here, you know? And that's what we're asking right now.
I don't think that's a, you know, I really don't see that it happened.
But you got a contract.
Who's in the council is gonna say that, you know, we don't want you guys to hold soccer tournaments?
I don't know, but you have, you're gonna hire new staff out there and there's something else we talked about right here, well, SEC's out there paying this. Well, somebody's gonna forget that we've already invested $80,000 into the complex before we stand here today. You guys know this. We've discussed that.
I understand the value and what you've put into it. To me, the value is more in what you bring in to the community from a tournament standpoint. And that's not something that SEC's doing right now.
Okay, guys, let's get down to it. Are you guys, who's...
I'd prefer to see us move to a 10-year agreement with some type of revaluation of an increase with a cap at the five-year mark to cover our additional costs.
A cap of...
I think that has to be negotiated, but I think anywhere between 2% and 5% or...
I mean, I'll say it here today and say if he's projecting 2%, if you wanna do this and it's a 10-year agreement with the revaluation and it's a 10% increase after five years and it goes to $2,200, we'll do that.
We're not recouping our cost and labor right now anyways.
We're not recouping it at all.
I mean, I think lights are great, but to me concessions make a lot more sense.
If you're making money off of concessions, if it's working.
If you're making money off.
And, you know, those are variables still.
Because I think if you're making money off of concessions, then over time, even within a 10-year period, that will lead to new lights and that will lead to irrigation and things like that.
I'm not sure how much money we're making on concessions at the reclex inside, so I'm just saying.
So let me, let me just, let me just look at this, the term two alternative. So if you're, CISA makes a contribution of 20,000, so it make, they make the contribution of 20,000 year two. And then you're saying that automatically it extends for five years, so it'd be like a seven-year contract.
Actually, I'm sorry, alternate two, we don't agree with.
You don't agree with that one either?
No, alternate three is a discussion that we had. We saw alternate two and that's why we have an alternate three discussion, because that'd be the same thing. We're gonna put money in year two and then the contract only extends two more years. That's, we're basically in the same situation right now.
Because I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm, if your, if your frame of mind, hate to be argumentative, but if your frame of mind is, well, we're just gonna do the two granted and forget it, then I'm gonna say, well, then I'm not gonna approve the contract at all.
Well, I understand that.
Because, because, you know, I think it's been a good agreement so far. We're just trying to put some legalese to it now.
Right.
You know, and like you say, you know, five years from now, who knows? But I'll make you this pledge right now, you guys hold up your end of the bargain. I'll be, do whatever I can to make sure that that goes through smooth sailing, whether I'm on the council or not, because I'll be more than happy to remind people. But if, if the threat is that, well, if you guys don't do the 10-year, that we're only gonna pay two grand a year, then I'm gonna say, well, we're not gonna do the two grand a year.
Can I ask that, this question then? If you're comfortable with that, that this would be extended 10 years and everybody's comfortable with that, I guess I'm questioning why there's the challenge of putting it on paper? Because we're putting it on paper to, for one thing, but we're saying we're comfortable with something else. I mean, a contract is a contract. We put down what we agreed to and what we're comfortable with, so in five years, we aren't changing our minds. I mean, if you're comfortable with it now, then let's put it on paper. That's what a contract's for.
Who's comfortable? I, I don't like going, doing over five-year contracts. I don't.
I can understand where they're coming from, though, because there could be a complete turnover on council and staff. I mean, I can...
You know, it'd be pretty short-sighted.
I can understand how people change their mind, especially in the council. I mean, it's all...
Maybe if we were gonna...
I'm, I think I would be comfortable with the cap and the 10-year.
If we were gonna do this right, city would take the money and invest to make those fields pristine and make all the improvements and then charge them the same rate that we'd be charging SEC.
Correct.
But we all know that that's not a possibility at this point due to the budget situation. They're willing to make the financial commitment on the front end in order to improve it. For me, the return for us is better and makes up the difference of what they're not actually paying us. I don't have a problem with doing a 10-year commitment and having a five-year reevaluation with a, with a dollar number cap as to what we can charge them additionally annually at the five-year mark for those increased costs if they were to be incurred.
Sounds perfect to me.
And a cap at...
I, I think that should be decided with staff and...
I think anywhere between $2 and $500, but I, without, I don't know what the increase has been over the last five years or since we started taking care of the field. I think anywhere between two and five hundred dollars, but I, without, I don't know what the increase has been over the last five years or since we started taking care of the field.
I don't know.
I mean, I doubt it's been significant, otherwise the issue would have been up.
I understand, but if I'm SEC, I'm listening to all that. I'm thinking, oh, five years, I've paid twenty-two, five more.
And if SEC puts together two large tournaments that pull people into the community on a regular basis and drop millions of dollars, then I'm willing to have the same conversation.
Yep.
All right, so those, those two are on a ten. I'm out. All right, I need a third. So we can go forward or?
Well, we, basically, you're back, you're going to have to go back to the drawing board to get that tenure hammered out. You're going to have to change the verbiage on that, and, but you can give it as a guideline, right? You're not going to vote on ten years tonight.
No, no, but I mean, I know that we want to go ahead and end this, so.
And what makes you comfortable with the tenure?
Forty thousand?
No, it's, it's not even that. It's just, I would just rather leave it at a five. And, you know, I just don't think, I'm telling you, even if I was standing in your shoes, that's the least of my worries is you getting crapped on. It's just a matter of, it's five years, man. Everybody comes back in five years. We will have a new council, but what new council, even if they're all new, if they're all new, is going to poop can on, on CISA? Dude, it's not going to happen. It's, it's not going to happen.
Brother, shit.
But but I can't, I can't, we can't move on it. It's not going to happen. You know that. I mean, you can have a contract and base it on it's not going to happen. I mean, if you, if you really believe it's not going to happen, then let's do this today and say it's not going to happen. I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Let's do this today.
Thank you.
Let's do this today. Ten years, revisit in five. Let's put a cap on it. Hey, man, I'm not trying to poo poo on the hard work you guys are doing, my friend.
I know.
I just got a job to do from this year too, so. You didn't have me at hello, but you had me at the o, so there's three. Figure it out. Let's figure it out.
Okay.
So you, so you want to, you'll have to get this to attorney, ten year revisit at five, what, what's the revisit or what, is there a trigger or what?
It's just a reevaluation of our, of our costs to determine what type of increase.
But you're going to have to limit, you're going to have to limit to this, to be fair to these guys, you got to limit that cost to the same chemicals and and stuff, not manpower.
Correct, correct.
So you got to limit that.
And I will say for their playing that that limit will be a maximum of five hundred dollars annually. Does that sound reasonable?
You're pushing, but yes. We can, we can go without.
You mentioned tie in or comparing to SEC. Is there any tie in here that they're continuing to host at least your annual tournament or something?
That was, when I, when I read over this this weekend, that was the only thing that stood out to me, and I'm glad you brought that up. There's no requirement in here that you continue to maintain a certain number of tournaments annually, and I'd like to see that language added to it. Because you're getting a better deal than any other organization in the community because of those.
If you guys decide that. If we're going to do that, I'd like to agree to the Mossa match in the fall. The, the spring tournament was our first one. You never know with your first one, you know? It could change next year and, but if we continue to hold one tournament a year, I mean, that's what we've done for every year up to now. We could agree to that.
I think that's fair.
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Tisland, you good?
Yeah, I just, timing wise, let's get this to attorney, get it back to you guys. I don't know if it'll be ready for Monday, so we may continue to the following meeting. I just don't want to.
Well, if it's going to be a ten year partnership, I just assume we take our time and do it right, you know?
Yep.
All right, let's.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Get it over and done with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number four. I'm looking forward to one of these tournaments. I'm going to come check it out.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Are you going to put me on the team?
You know, you're going to be starting. Don't leave me hanging, man. Don't leave me hanging, brother. All right. motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-one twenty-nine, being an ordinance creating the D Wall Plaza PUD plan development by making changes to the section three B land use design criteria and section five fifty foot above for park.
This change again only reflects to the land use on lot seven, as shown on the map there, which is in the southeast corner of the D Walled PUD. This would allow residential use, including multifamily residential on this lot, as well as maintain a buffer between lot six and seven, similar to what's on the backside of those properties on Lawrence Drive, separating the commercial to residential. It is zone residential to the north. Village Cooperative is just the east of this property. There is a lot of residential in this area based on zoning specifically. This makes sense from a zoning standpoint. I know there's some questions raised as far as what's compatible with the airport. We don't have any specific regulations or requirements in our code at this time on that. But that's where we're at with this. It is just allowing residential on lot seven and then a landscape buffer between lot six and seven.
Right on, right on. You guys getting problems with that?
No questions on that one.
Okay, number five.
One note on that. There is the height restriction. We did mention to, I guess, an individual that stopped in looking at, that's discussing the site, developing it, get with Mary and make sure they fill out that form so that they are, they are aware of it, those that are considering this lot.
The biggest concern I had, and I listened to the, the meeting from a couple of weeks ago when this discussion came up, nothing that we're going to do there is going to violate the FAA regulations.
Our, our PUD that we amended back in twenty fourteen was intended to be more restrict than the FAA height restrictions, and that, that's the language that was put in our PUD. Maybe something we need to just compare our actual language to theirs, but we amended our PUD in two thousand fourteen to be more restrictive than the FAA height restrictions.
And whatever building goes in, we still have to approve.
Yeah.
Right on.
Yeah, we, we get all the building, we have to get all the building plans and get the heights and elevations before we sign off on that, and we.
Is this something that we can just move forward to a final reading, or do we have to continue to go through?
I would recommend that you not move it.
Yeah, I would go through.
Yeah.
Okay.
We good?
Yes.
Okay, number five is, number five is a preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter ninety-seven industrial pretreatment required requirements, requirements of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Don.
Don, you know, I'm just going to say, I always notice the, the, the people back there always smile when you get up to talk because they're not having to get up as much as you do. What, I don't know what that's about. What's going on back there, fellas? Guys or girls?
It's what I call the peanut gallery.
I don't even let him sit at the table.
I know. You don't even let him sit at the table.
Don't really have very much to say about this. It's basically two things, a reevaluation of the plants, of capabilities, limitations of the processes to come up with new local limits, which is regulating the total loading that goes to the wastewater treatment plant. So as not to upset, cause pass through. That's what the purpose of the local limits are. There is a trickle down effect where you have residences which you really can't control. You've got business offices which you really don't control, and then you've got your industrial users which you do have control over. And so if you're going to, these local limits, more than, twice as many of the limits were tightened down as opposed to those that were actually loosened a little bit, and you have to come up with a, a means to ensure the, the, that the facility is protected. So the local limits are there. It will result in some tightening of some limits that are issued to our wastewater dish, our waste, in our wastewater permits to our significant industrial users. The second part of the improvements are some language changes that U.S. Environmental Protection Agency want to see included in our ordinance and ultimately in our permits issued to our industries that ensure we have legal authority and we have the ability to regulate and to work with the industries and bring them into compliance when and if there is an issue.
The EPA has spoken. You guys have any questions? Okay.
Wave reading or?
Huh?
Yeah, we're, I don't fast track that one.
Would you like to wave this one, James?
Let's fast track that one.
You were ready to wave it last time.
Hey, man, when the EPA speaks, what's the point of playing around with it? That's how I feel, but whatever. All right, we're good. Number six is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand eighteen depot white boxing. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. You don't have anything in your packets as of yet. We received bids today at two o'clock in the afternoon. I will have to have my architect dissent some of the information and give me back a recommendation, but the, the tentative low bid is a hundred and seventy-two thousand sixty-three dollars. There was an alternate also bid and spec'd out, which in the base, the base plans, the windows around the arch there was just getting the window panes replaced on the bottom with some patching of the, of the framework. The alternate bid number one was a replacement, similar to the windows system that was installed in the great room, and that alternate bid is at eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty. I think the value is fairly good on that alternate one. The base bid does include some window costs. I'll have to talk to him about that. From an efficiency standpoint, I think if we're going to do it, it could make a lot of sense. The only issue that I see is, is, is our allotted amount of money that was left was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, composed of the hundred and five remaining from the, from the sanitary lateral being removed from the original hundred and twenty thousand, from the Economic Development Fund, and then the seventy-five thousand dollar challenge grant. And then we have seventeen and change for engineering or architect costs on this. So a hundred and seventy-two thousand with the base bid alone would put us over budget on this project and not a whole lot of room for change orders. There's no room for change orders if we're already over budget. I already heard his laugh.
James, man, this guy.
I don't know if there's anything we can value engineer out of this. There was some mechanical work that got added to it. That's the reason why you're seeing it this week instead of the week before. So I'll have to talk with him, with, with them tomorrow to see if there's anything that we can try and dial back or if, you know, we do have a potential leaser of the property and to see if there's any costs that they could absorb in this project. But it's unfortunate that's this, this high bid, but it's kind of the work we're in.
Do you think if we bid it at a later date, that that would be better? Because this original, that original estimate was put together, what, three years ago?
That was me putting it together for budget season, so I wouldn't put much, put much weight on what I put together. I mean, it was estimates based on a previous contractor. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not an architect. These guys took a real dialed in look on things. And I, I think I remember asking for like a hundred and fifty some thousand, and Economic Development put in a hundred and twenty. So I mean, if we were going to do it right, I think we probably should have more money in there just to make sure there's no, I mean, there's, I saw the great room renovation and the amount of change orders that came with that, just because when you're renovating something that, that, that's that old, you just run into things that you never could have expected to, to plan for and, and to put into a spec. So there's not a lot of room, I mean, to, to move things around. I, I just don't know what, what the right answer is. Let me talk with the architect tomorrow.
You're going to tell something back, brother.
And I don't know what that would be.
About the same token, you know, I mean, we're somewhat, we're somewhat committed to doing, whether it's whoever we lease it to. If you ever want to lease that thing, it's going to have to have some money put into it.
Oh, without a doubt.
You know, it does get to the point where, you know, want the project to be complete.
I'd really feel a lot better about it if we had some lease terms together on the potential leaser prior to making these commitments. But I don't know, that's probably, how far away are we from that?
We've had some conversations, and I haven't had any response on wanting to get that.
We presented a lease a year and a half ago, and there's been no desire to talk about him.
At least upon completion, right?
What's that?
At least upon completion.
Yeah, well, just talking about what the terms would be, and there, I mean, there is some, some feedback, but there was no real desire to get too far down the road.
And we even discussed the percentage of what value would we put into the overall cost of the project versus the potential tenant, and then they're having a reduction in a lease rate for a certain given number of years.
So maybe there'll be some desire now, but right now, I mean, part of the project you have doing the floor and the great room.
Correct, that's in, that's in this.
Which isn't necessarily part of a white boxing effort, but it needs done.
It really would tie the whole building together, I think, but.
And the.
It's six, six fifty a square foot, and there's, you know, there's four thousand square foot in there. It's a, it's a thirty-six thousand dollar cost to rebuff the whole floor in there. So, I mean, that's a simple thing that you could take out if you really wanted to, but that's a tough thing to try and get away from. It was kind of the tying of the whole, the whole project together, so. I know the Friends of the Depot really would like that to be done. Maybe there's some donation money that could help fund a part of that, but I haven't had that conversation.
All right, you might want to have that conversation.
Yeah, because this wasn't, if you think about when we talked about putting money aside for white boxing, putting money aside to do the, this buffing was not part of that discussion.
Correct, it was not. It would fit in with the challenge grant as part of writing that.
Is it, is, is the grant proceeds, does, does that grant mandate that that floor be done in order to take advantage of those proceeds?
I don't think so. Think so. No.
Okay, I think.
Well, I guess, for me, I think we, we do need to have some kind of bare bones lease agreement, or at least some terms worked out with the, the person that wants to do the, the dining room, because if not, what we need to do to recoup our, to start telling somebody, hey, we're going to have this white box ready to go. Who else wants in here?
I mean, I'm really excited about the white boxing. I'm optimistic about the potential leaser. However, I think we have to do our due diligence, and part of that is sitting down with the potential leaser and making sure that whoever that is, they understand that once this is done, that the lease needs to.
Needs to go.
Come, it needs to be signed fairly quickly. Otherwise, we've invested money into a building that still remains vacant, and we can't.
Prior to award?
Yeah, well.
I don't know if it's prior to award. We're going to do it regardless.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to do it.
Because once you award, you are committed to doing it. I mean, you could break the contract, but.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
There's materials that will be purchased upon award of that.
On awarding at this point.
I'm just thinking about down the road, because I'm, I'm, I'm about doing it, but I'm thinking down the road, we need to have some kind of agreement worked out. So when we're done, there's a, there's a process to go forward, and if he's not going, you know, whoever is not going to do it.
They're working on that.
Then we can get someone else.
They're working on that.
Okay.
Are we good with the resolution?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Lady. Okay, brings us to our proposed consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. No problems there. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for site improvement work on the new police department building.
We owe it. Got to pay it.
You were free on that, wasn't there?
Yeah, it goes through, it goes through four, two, three, four.
Number three is retent, revol-, uh, revolution, prints on the revolution. Number three is a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for general construction on the new police department building. Number four is resolution, resolution, why did I keep on, revolution? Resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for electric work on the new police department building. Number five, just if you guys want to say something, but I think you would. Number five is resolution granting permission to sign off on correspondence and forms required for the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Locust Basin Sewer Project.
This is required for CDBG funding?
Yeah, we did something similar for the sod project, just gives alternate signatories if needed for that, sign offs on forms.
Right on. You guys good? Number six is a resolution adopting public notice affirmative fair housing policy.
This is the same, just making sure we have it updated for the CDBG. This is related to the Locust Sewer Project as well.
Number se-, good, guys?
Yes.
Yep.
Number seven is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the City of West Burlington, Iowa for the construction of Agency Street Rise Project. Mr. Mann.
I'll throw a map up here so that way it's a little easier to talk about.
This resolution, along with the next two, are resolutions describing the shared costs of the projects that are currently going on. The first one that you mentioned was the Rise Grant Project, which is, we are the principal municipality behind it, running the project. It is a, I'm sorry, an eighty-twenty match with Rise Grant, and the MOU draws out the percentage that West Burlington owes us upon completion of it. As you can see, it's, it's a fifteen to five percentage split of the twenty percent. So we're at about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand of contribution, where they're at ninety-five thousand. And so you see, that's the, the orange or more yellowish portion of the Agency Street Project. That's currently our project, but the city, the city boundary line's in print. West Burlington is on the north half of the road. We're on the south half of the road, so that's the reason why there's that cost shared between the two municipalities.
Questions?
I have a question about that particular intersection, West Burlington Avenue and Agency. I've had, I had somebody say something about how the north and south lights. I've had, I had somebody say something about how the north and south lights do not allow for very much time for traffic to flow.
Probably, it's on, it's on a timed right now. Camera detection or detection in general was not specked out on that. We've had some issues with the contractor trying to get that completed, that's how I'll put that.
Okay.
We, yeah.
I didn't know if anyone else had heard any complaints about that.
We probably should look at the timing of that more than anything, but it should be resolved with the camera detection.
It's something that will, will get completed, whether it's done as part of this project or done.
As a separate project bid it out. And it'll be better because all, the whole, the, the Agency Roosevelt, and then the Frontage Road, and then West Burlington Avenue, those three will be coordinated at the end of it.
Right, yeah.
But unfortunately, without the camera detection, there's not, you can't coordinate them if there's no way to detect any vehicles, so it's on a timed loop.
The, is this a complete street project? I mean, are we, it's gonna have two lanes and center turn lane?
It already does, yeah. This, this is the street, this is the Agency Street Project that's almost complete.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
All right. Brings us to number eight, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the City of West Burlington, Iowa for the construction of Mount Pleasant Street Overlay Project. Mr. Mann.
This is, this is the complete street project. This was the, the, I think at the time was an STBG or one of the acronyms for the DOT project, where we received a million dollars in grant funds. In there, you can see that West Burlington actually has a larger share of the, of the quantity of road being resurfaced than Burlington does. It's in percentages right now, because Agency Street is near completion, where this project is just starting to gear up. So, we have it just broken down in percentages. We have cost estimates of what it was bid out, but that dollar figure can change with different change orders and quantity adjustments, where you can see we're, we're at forty-three percent of the, of the overall cost, and then West Burlington's at fifty-seven. So, that, that's the asphalt project from Roosevelt Alto Gere. That will be a three-lane road with the center turn lane and then two bike lanes. That's how it'll be configured at the end of it.
You guys good?
Yep.
Yes.
And that's the purple. I didn't explain that.
Number nine is resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the City of West Burlington, Iowa for the construction of an HMA overlay on Agency Street between Gear Avenue and West Burlington Avenue. Nick.
This is the green section between West Burlington Avenue and Broadway. This is the West Burlington-run project. We actually own some of the north or some of the south section of the eastbound lanes, so we have been in discussion with West Burlington, where we will owe twenty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars at the end of this project, of which we hadn't budgeted for. We, frankly, we didn't know that it was coming. But this is something that we have, we've allotted for a little bit of room in the, in the East Agency Project that is ours. Now, there's, there's three or four different Agency Projects going on, but we have, we have the one point four million dollars in general obligation funds that we borrow. We did about seven-hundred thousand dollars in asphalt work. We knew that we were over budget on the Agency Street Project to try and have some allowance, and then we had, we had a little bit more on another project. I don't remember what that was. But we gave ourselves a little bit of room, and this twenty-eight thousand could come out of there or could come out of road use tax. That's kind of up to Mr. Forneau on where that comes from. But the road needed to be done. It's nice to have the whole corridor of Agency from Gear all the way to Melrose Court will be all new, so I think it's worth it. We don't, we're not having, paying for any overhead, we're paying for quantity only, so it's a pretty good deal.
Number ten, resolution accepting the Heritage Hill Historic District Guidelines. Mr. Tisdale.
City received a certified local government, a CLG, grant last year to create historic guidelines specifically for the Heritage Hill Historic District. That's our only local historic district. It's governed by Chapter twenty-five of city code. Within that Chapter twenty-five, it makes reference to the use of design guidelines for the Historic Preservation Commission for guidance for them. We don't have any guidelines to actually provide them guidance, so they've used the Secretary of Interior Historic Guidelines. These will be more locally specific, and they are used, again, by the Historic Preservation Commission to review applications of changes in that local historic district and guidance for residents and developers for historic properties in those areas. So, we've had that as a goal from the Historic Preservation Commission for quite some time, because our code references something that doesn't exist, and so now it does, and that'll be a better guide for review of applications and for people that live in that historic district, if they're looking to make changes to their home, they can reference this guide on what's appropriate or not, so. This is on file here in our Development Department. We'll have a copy in the library in the City Clerk, and then it's on our website as well.
Number eleven is a resolution approving agreement, a professional services agreement with HR Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for general consulting services for the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility for the period of July first, two thousand and eighteen, to July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Fiddy.
We had this agreement with HR Green the last fiscal year. I was negligent and allowed it to expire. We spent some of the money. Basically, we rely on HR Green for some minor questions and some major questions that relate to the wastewater treatment plant. We've had a long working relationship with them, and they're familiar with the plant, and feel like that they are best qualified and give us a reasonably good answer in a relatively short period of time, because there's not a lot of need for a lot of background and research in that, because they are familiar with the facility, and we're asking for the agreement to be renewed for the remainder of this fiscal year.
You guys have any issues with that? Okay, thank you, sir. Number twelve is a resolution approving Help to Others Program, H-2O, through American Water Resources. Who's got that?
All right, one of the things that was put aside when with, from American Water Resources was, they said that they'd set aside five thousand annually to be offered in some sort of a program to provide assistance to, to people who were eligible for assistance, but they, they said that we were the ones that were required to come up with eligibility guidelines. I think this took some work to, Stephanie might've worked with them and possibly getting it from other places, and what's been put in, established for how to set up a program. But what you see here is a, an eligibility program for, to use that five thousand dollars for folks who can apply, who have a service line that breaks, for assistance and paying for it. There's income guidelines based on household size. It's a first-serve, first-come, first-served program. When the funds are out, it is, it's, it's done until the next year. I don't really have a whole lot of other information on it. It will, the difficult thing with, for us with it being a first-come, first-served is how do you promote that? It's not, we're in a position, we, we don't know about breaks until, sometimes we, we never hear about a break. I guess, I don't know if Chris gets information on a lot of them, but not necessarily all of them. But he doesn't know where someone fits and whether they would be potentially beneficial or not. But we do want to make sure that we get it out there and publicize, be on our website, just so it's known that, you know, if you do have a break, this is a funding source that is available. Now, Stephanie, I'm not sure, I don't think you have to be an AWR customer, American Water Resources customer.
That was my next question.
To, to have this be something that you can use. So, this is just one of the things that they did want to make is, and do something that was above and beyond, and really, it came out of some of the discussions that we had at the last renewal.
Hey, media table. You guys want to take care of that for us? Wake up, hide down. You guys good? Well, we've got to start somewhere, so, but yeah, it'd be nice to get that out. Do you have any idea what the, how that, how that works out? Is it the amount of work done? Is there a, I mean, do you have any clue on?
Now, this is essentially.
You mean, how far the five thousand dollars will go?
Yeah, I'm saying how mu, per customer, how much one customer, how much of that five grand is.
It depends on the water line.
You could have a, you can have a break if, that could take the whole five thousand.
Oh, I know that, I'm saying, well, really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is a one-customer deal, or?
Could be. I had a, I had a service line break in Davenport a few months ago.
Oh, no, I'm saying, I know that the breaks can get expensive. How much are, this isn't to pay for the whole thing, this is to give assistance.
This is not set aside to be a percentage. If you wanted to change it, it's, this is just set aside, someone who's qualified can get a portion of their cost covered, and it's, if it's five thousand, it's available. If it's someone, the way it's written, if somebody has a.
And the first person to call.
A six-thousand-dollar repair may be that.
I'd rather not have it set up that way. I'd rather have it set up to where you break it up at least like maybe five ways, and you get a thousand dollars assistance, so that more people can have access to that money, you know? To get a little bit more help.
I agree with that, but then, is there anything that says the money rolls over?
Nope, this is, does not roll over.
That's the problem I'm thinking of, is if there's only one break, and, or, you know, and someone only gets to use a thousand dollar, you know?
What if we just limited it to like twenty-five percent per household?
The program isn't set up that way. Basically, if somebody, it's, it's almost like they're gonna have the insurance, so we would have them fill out that form, they'd tell us what's wrong, we would call American Water Resources and ask them to fix it. Then they take it from there.
And they spend the five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so to say we'd break it into thousand-dollar increments, I don't think they would do that.
So, it's, it's literally gonna be first-come, first-served?
Right.
And it could be just one person.
When they might only have one a year.
It's most likely gonna be one. We do have breaks that are, that are less than that, but, you know, I had my water rail line replaced, and it was fifteen hundred, but it was also in a perfect location.
And I made sure that they charged you extra. You good?
Good.
Yeah, I guess so.
That wasn't in this town.
All right. Number thirteen, a resolution approving the street sign disposal policy. Mr. McGregor.
I've always wondered.
Yes. So, the policy in front of you, I created because we were asked to donate a street sign, and I said, well, I never even thought about that. And I went back and realized how many of these we have. So, this was taken down because it was damaged. A lot of times, the other ones are taken down because the retroreflectivity no longer is viable. We throw this in a scrap pile, we probably get two to three dollars' worth of scrap price out of it, if we're lucky. The policy calls out where we were, we would be selling these, we would inventory them, we would decommission them from, from operation.
Right on.
In the policy, it also states that you shall not put it up in any manner that would conflict with other traffic control. For instance, stop signs are fairly popular, you shouldn't put a stop sign at, you know, at the edge of your driveway or in the middle of the street or something. I mean, we will, we'll confiscate it. But I figured if there was a, if there was a, a market out there for people to buy used street signs, if it takes a little bit of, a little bit of staff time, it might be worth it, so that's the reason for the policy.
Have you ever seen Pickers?
Maybe they'll come down. So, that's, that's what the policy is in a nutshell. They would sign off, get a receipt, and they'd say the price, twenty-five dollars a pop.
I'd like to.
There's some size that are, there's some size, signs that are bigger, you know, stop signs are significantly bigger than this, but.
People will start putting orders in.
So, anyway, we will, I mean, upon approval, we'll get an inventory of some sort on the web, and then some sort of way that we can organize it on our, at our end.
Yes, sir.
And then, as people potentially are willing to do it, they'll come up to Public Works, and I don't, I don't know where exactly they'll be at, but it's not like we're gonna have a store or anything, but we'll have a, we'll have an inventory on a, on a pallet somewhere.
Monetizing something, if we do, that's great.
Absolutely. Yeah, oh, maybe we can get a nick.
Nick just broke the mic.
No, I.
We can use money for a new mic stand.
Fix one problem, break another one. Okay, good deal, Nick.
Yeah.
Number fourteen is to set a date for a public hearing for September seventeenth for consideration of an ordinance pending Section one hundred point six point two D, determination of stormwater utility fee, right of way of Chapter one hundred Stormwater Management Drainage Systems Utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Let's move on to discussion items. Treasurers report number one. Going downhill, guys. Annette, class of eighty-seven.
So, in the packet is two treasurer's reports, again, June, that's updated through the twenty-first. There's just a few entries now that we're waiting to make, so most things have gotten put back, but there's a hotel motel payment, our lost true-up, if we get one. Yeah, I know, there won't be, but I gotta do like the internal service funds, vehicle maintenance and property maintenance entries aren't made yet, because we're waiting to get through this month, and then some receivables that will go back for, that we've collected in August. The only other thing that I wanted to really point out on that one was that there was a transfer done in the sewer fund to the sewer mainline repairs, so that will not be a deficit balance in that fifty-four, fifty-three. It just shifted from the overall sewer fund to that project, so.
Right on. Questions for Annette?
Anybody?
The only question I had was the Parks Project is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar deficit.
Just a second.
What's that the result of? Trail is ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah, okay, so that's timing, though. We get different grants, so like a REAP grant, we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As a matter of fact, we got one today.
Okay.
So, it just hasn't got put back there yet, so, again, waiting on some receivables.
Yep, that was the only thing that I saw that you didn't bring up, but I had a question.
Yes, and I forgot that I, we got it to, we got a check today.
Okay, yes, money's good.
So, then, the other, the other treasurer's report is July's that's in there, and you'll see that it's very light, because a lot of things go back to the end of the year. I mean, so, overall, there's nothing unexpected, this is typical for July. Again, on the Capitol Projects page of the thing, a lot of it's timing of things that, you know, waiting for funds to come in, or it's grant-funded, and it's all reimbursement basis. And then, like, there's one in here for the Public Works Facility, and that's the beginning of the roof, so we just, other than that, I mean, I don't, the revenue and expenditures are, nothing stood out as out of the ordinary. I mean, we get a lot of lease payments for Otter Island, and that's one of the numbers that you'll see on there, that's, that fourteen percent of our revenue in one month, and that's because those are all leases that start July first. And then, again, in, on the expenditure side, the only one that's largely over the one-month average would be the education and culture, and that's because we made an AMF payment to them. So, other than that, I mean, if you guys have any other questions.
Questions? Thank you, Annette.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Annette. Appreciate you. Discussion number two is tennis courts.
Wanted to have a discussion just from council to gauge interest in the tennis court resurfacing project. Last year, it was kind of discussion after the budget. We have funds identified within the budget as outside entity for, primarily for that tennis court project. Before we have any further discussions, I just just wanted to gauge, is there any interest in moving forward with further discussions with entities, school districts, or is it something you'd like staff just to seek alternative funding and go through the evaluation in future budget cycles to come up with alternative funds? I know, had an inquiry just a couple months ago from the schools, is it something we wanted to have any further discussion on or not, and didn't want to have discussions if it was gonna come to council and not move forward, so.
I'd like to look for alternative, I just rather save the drama.
I think the, well, it is gonna create drama, no matter what we do, it's gonna create drama, but at the end of the day, we gotta make smart financial decisions. The biggest problem we had was the fact that Notre Dame was kind of, didn't have a whole lot of time in order to, to respond to it. I think at this point, they've had a, they've had quite a bit of time to, to take steps in order to ensure that they're included in those talks, so I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say.
It's kind of what I want to bring forward now, so that if there is some discussion from between schools, that there is time to plan instead of right-upon practice schedule sessions, but didn't want to have those discussions if we weren't gonna bring anything forward as well.
I'd be in favor in hearing what, what their proposal would be.
Yes, and the last.
I know there's also a new athletic director there, too, so I don't know how much they've been included or not, I feel like.
City courts, man, city courts, just say them.
I feel like going for just an alternative, our own, finding our own way with the funding, and if they should happen to want to work with other schools and ourselves, I think that's great, but I think we should be kind of proactive in our own responsibility, I guess, finding funding sources for it.
But with the CISA thing tonight, creating partnerships is part of the way of a, is But with the CISA thing tonight, creating partnerships is part of the way of, is one way that we can move forward maintaining our facilities. So, my biggest issue with the, what we brought before us last time was the lack of time.
Yeah.
That one school had in, in order to make plans and they weren't even given an option.
Yeah. And percentage wise, I mean, they are asking for exclusive use and so there, there should be some kind, kind of agreement worked out. And if they can work out a partial funding on it, as long as it's done on a percentage basis, you know, bear in mind that, you know, everybody's paid taxes at least once, so. I, I just, I think if you, if you can have those discussions that you can reach where they're both in agreement, then I'd be willing to look at that. But last time, they both weren't in agreement.
So, if one entity is willing to contribute like we had last time and one not, is that something we don't want to bring forward?
You guys can do two.
Because I'd imagine that's probably where we're gonna be.
Well, but was indicated last time though, is that they, if they would've had time, they would've looked for fundraising. So, I think with, if you give it as an option and see what gauge the interest, then we'll go from there.
I think the message that we delivered to Notre Dame because they were, they were upset because they hadn't had the opportunity was come up with a plan. If you guys want to be included, you can be included, but you're gonna have to come up with a, a plan in order to come up with the funding to be able to do something as well. I hope they've done that. If they haven't.
But the easy, the easiest way is to find our own funding and then charge appropriately for the use of the court.
I don't think that's just the easiest way. I think it's honestly, it's the, I gotta say it, I think it's the more appropriate way. Again, these are, when we go start parting stuff out, you know, even with, even with partnerships, the partnerships are supposed to be community partnerships, not where we're excluding somebody else and, you know, working out time schedules.
Yeah.
It's our public courts, man. Let's, let's get them done and let's, uh, let people play on as they, as they get there, but.
So.
Do you understand what we're trying?
So, around about it.
I just wanted to make it clear where you guys are on that, man. I think it's a, I think it's a mistake, but.
Uh, here's what I'll tell you. It's really hard for us to make that decision because we have no idea what's on the table.
Not like anything.
Yeah. All right. I, I could imagine what, it'd be similar to last year based on my conversations after the fact that, but.
But that's what you're asking is if you wanna, if we're giving it the okay to move forward to have discussions with the two schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm saying, I, I say no. Where you guys at?
So, alternative funding is grant funding, but we have to have a local match. So, that'd be something during budget time. I know our budget, it's not gonna be a priority, so these, they, I guess the current project probably won't happen.
I, I think my biggest issue was Notre Dame was being put in a position where they weren't gonna have the opportunity to use the courts. Lack of planning, lack of timing. A year later, that, that reason goes away. So, I, I'd be in favor of hearing what either school has the opportunity to say.
Yeah. Three of you?
No. I would rather us try to take care of the problem or solve. Cause I, the idea of the whole bidding more like, oh, if you've run.
We don't want to create a bidding.
Right, no, but.
It comes back to cooperation.
I think, I, I guess I'm, I'm to the frame of mind, yes or no. I, you know, we let staff work on it, see what the best options are and they present them to us, you know, whether, whatever that is. So, I, that's why we have professionals. So, so I don't have to say yes or no tonight. I could say.
I'm comfortable with saying Eric, go work on it. Tell us what our best options are.
He's in some direction, so.
So, I'd go, I'd look at either one.
So, you have a no, a yes, and a?
I'm a maybe.
And a maybe.
All, if, if you wanna, if you wanna move forward with checking with the schools to see if they can work something out, you know, and everybody's happy.
Great. But if they're not gonna be happy, then we won't do it. If, if they come to us with the same option or the same opportunity they did last year.
They're not gonna be able to get anything worked out.
Um, you know, if, if we're able to come up with it in the budget, that's the best solution. If we're not and that's the only offer on the table, then I guess we have to have that conversation when that time comes.
See if he can work some magic, my friend. That's where we are, I guess.
But it is important that Notre Dame and any other entity that, that uses those facilities be included or at least brought up to date with those talks.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number three is the City Township Ambulance Association Agreement. Chief.
Agreement? Was that what it says? Or update? It was agreement.
It says, it says agreement.
Okay. All right. We'll talk about that too. I can't remember what we titled it. So, yeah, we're gonna talk about City Township Ambulance Association and the proposed agreement. Hereon after, I will refer to it as CTAA. That's what most people call that group. All right, there we go. And I do have a meeting at 6:30, so I'm.
Take your time, chief.
I will not. So, I couldn't find that.
6:30? That's 45 minutes from now.
What's that? That's, it's in Danville.
Oh, okay, good.
And I can change it. So, I don't know when.
I didn't think you were gonna take 45 minutes. It's like, oh my god.
Take your time, chief.
So, I'm not sure when the agreement was first formed, or when the CTAA was formed. We're not a member of it. We signed a contract with them. It's, the members are West Burlington, the Quad Townships, which is Flint River, Tama Union, Concordia, Danville, Danville Township, Pleasant Grove Township, Middletown and Gulfport. So, all those combined, that's the CTAA and they contract with Burlington, the City of Burlington or Burlington Fire Department to provide ambulance service to their community. So, the transport side. That, basically that, all those areas in blue are members. That, we got a little bit of Gulfport or Illinois there. Of course, we go a lot, we do go to other areas in Illinois as, not as the primary ambulance. So, that area has about 11,000 people living in it, so about half again as big as Burlington. 190 square miles, much bigger than Burlington. And then last year, there was about 1,000 ambulance calls in that.
Wow.
So, out of our 4,200 calls, about 1,000 were in that area. So, the way the contract is now, I don't know if convoluted is the right word, but it's, it's not real easy to figure out year to year how much they pay us. Basically, they pay us what, on paper, what we're losing as an ambulance service. So, we take our operating cost, which includes 12 paramedics, includes a portion of the deputy chief, the billing manager and one of the battalion chiefs that serves as the EMS officer, and then it takes all of our training costs, some of our utility costs, anything that has to do with the ambulance is all figured in there. Then we subtract our revenue and then we show a loss. So, last year, oh, and then they also pay a, a capital part. So, when we started this, maybe three, four years ago, we started with a base of 10,000 a year and it goes up 2% annually on the capital. So, for 2017, we showed an operating loss there of 163,000. That was our revenue was 1.2, expenses 1.4. The CTAA, we figured out how many calls we had total, how many, what percentage of those calls were in the CTAA. I forgot to explain that part. So, it was 18.33% of our calls were in the CTAA. So, they pay 18.33% of the cost of our service, the, the loss. So, they paid 18% of that 163,000, which was the 29,558 plus the 10,000 and 2% the capital cost there. So, last year, we got 40,783.
And how, how are they figuring up that 18.33%?
So, we, we had to take our 4,200 ambulance calls, look through all of those and see which ones were in Danville, West Burlington, Danville Township. That's the convoluted part because then.
Who's doing that, Dan?
And I give them all those calls and they say, no, this was a Highway 34. It was actually in Flint River, not in Danville. So, it's this back and forth before we can finally agree, like these are the calls that we're, they're going with. So, it's not a real easy thing to come up with. Oh, there's the last several years. So, every year, it fluctuates. Of course, part of our income, revenue is the CTAA payment. So, you have a high CTAA payment in one year, that goes on your revenue, then you, they pay less the next year. But, so it's kind of has wavered in those years. It was actually before 2013, there were some years it was quite a bit less than that. We were only figuring in six paramedics in the formula, even though we were staffing two ambulances per day, which comes up to 12 people. So, this last year, when we added the third ambulance, we proposed to them, like if we include the total cost of the service, we're gonna have to up that to 18 people, which then took that loss and cut, made it quite a bit bigger number. I'm not sure if they got sticker shock, but what, but I wanted to change it to a different formula that's easier for everybody to look at and say, this is what I'm gonna pay this year, next year, the year after. For Burlington to know this is how much revenue we're getting from CTA. So, a lot of places use a per capita rate. So, you just pay, how many people are in your district, you pay a per capita charge. So, we're proposing that all, all the entities would pay $5 per capita starting in 2019 and then going up to $7. I think that's years three, four and five, and then it would just be that unless we signed a new contract. At $5, our payment would be 55,000 for the next year, 2019. Very similar to what they just paid us in 2017. Not really a big change. There was a year in there, if you've seen in the totals where they were paying 70,000 a year. I think there's one even higher than that. At seven, at the end of the contract or three, years three, four and five, they'd be paying 77,455. So, I was able to find from other, all our neighboring counties in Iowa, they, all the ambulance services in those counties all get some kind of a subsidy from the county. In Henry County, it's a, it's actually a county-owned service. Right on their website, they say we're, we get $6 per capita for our expenses. Loisa County, what I did was took all, there's three services there, all volunteers. They all get a subsidy. I added the three subsidies, divided it by their population. They pay $9 per capita. Lee County, their ambulance service gets 432,000 dollars a year from the county for three, very similar to Burlington, three ambulances, maybe not quite as many calls. So, you divide that by their population, it's $12 per capita. So, we're right in that range. We're, we'll be on the lower end even at the end of the five-year mark. I don't know why that picture's in there. I took an old slideshow and updated it. So, of course, the big reason for me wanting to do this change is a lot easier to calculate. You know year to year, how much, if they know how much they're gonna pay, we know how much we're gonna bring in. And then we've had a lot of questions from other areas, especially from Henderson County. Hey, could you maybe take over this portion of the county? And we never know what to tell them, you know? How do you figure what to cost? We can't just do it for nothing, but this will at least give us a basis to say, you know what, here, we're charging $7 per capita.
Is, is there gonna be a, a way to track this to make sure that, that down the road, we're still, even after we hit that $7, that we're, that we're still coming out okay?
Are we gonna show that we're making money with the ambulance service? I don't know that. When we're putting 12 people in that budget, now that'll be 18 if we do a true accounting of the ambulance. So, there's three ambulances per day, so six times three shifts, that's 18 people. I don't know that that's gonna show a profit.
No, I, I.
Ever that way.
I guess where I'm at is, you know, is there a way for us to still go through the process of seeing what percentage of calls?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'd be interested in.
Right.
Because if the calls jump from 18 to 30%,
Yeah.
then we need more money.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I, I think, is that where you were at?
That's right, my friend.
Yeah. And it's easy to track that year to year. We've been right around the 17% mark, 17 to 18% every year for a number. That, that's a, actually a three-year rolling average is what they use. That's where the 18.33 came from. He's gonna miss the end. That's the end of it. If you have any questions about how that contract works, it's been a good partnership for us.
Do you, do you think they're gonna, have you talked to them? Do you think they're looking at that?
Yeah, I approached, they have a, actually the West Burlington mayor, he's the administrator of the, the contract. So, I have met with him. I'm gonna send him some documents and then he'll give it to the other CTA members. I am meeting with the Flint River Township people tomorrow and then I, of course, I have a fire meeting tonight and I'll broach it with those.
Okay.
Entities there. So, there is a little bit of a cost shift from, say, West Burlington pays the bigger share now. It'll be, that'll be divided up a little bit more amongst the other entities.
Okay. Any, any other questions or concerns? Okay, I think we're.
From our perspective, it's a lot easier to, not only is it from their perspective, from ours, it's, it's a lot easier to manage and keep track of what's going on.
I, I think, is there, is there a reason we're capping it at 7?
Well, I just didn't want to go over there and say, hey, we're doubling what you've been paying us for ambulance service.
But looking at what a, is it a 5% increase annually from five to seven? So, almost six, 5.8%. So, wouldn't it make sense just to continue to carry that 5.8% increase? Because as the safer grant goes away.
Right.
So does the potential firefighter. Fighters were, were in paramedics without that revenue.
Yeah.
And, and if they're taking up almost 20% of the calls, I still feel like they're getting a really good deal even at $7.
Right. I think at the end of the five years, definitely, we revisit the, the $7.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Doesn't have to stay there forever. I think that's kind of.
Did I have the, I had that figure on there at the $7, didn't I?
Yeah.
Seventy-seven, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's good. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, I'll bring back a contract and sign.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
Perfect. Thank you. Our last discussion item, we have an appointment for, let's see, get that pulled up, the Animal Hearing Board. Carol's term expired this month and requesting to appoint Paul Carl to fulfill the expired term. Does anyone have any issues with that? I, there's three, three females and one male, so that would be.
They would get split.
Make it more even, yeah. So, I think that would be okay. Good.
I don't have a problem.
All right. And hello, mayor.
Hello.
We are done.
You got any appointments?
Yep, we're done.
Yeah, just want to say thank you to Mr. Carl. Appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead and wrap this up. Mr. Teslan, closing remarks?
Just a reminder of the Brownfield area-wide planning, public open house tomorrow. Give a recap of the final findings and the plan to date. This will be the final public open house on the plan. It's at 5:30 at the Public Library tomorrow, Tuesday. Encourage all interested, especially those interested in downtown and redevelopment to come and attend.
That's it? Okay. Counselor?
I don't have anything.
Counselor?
Um, this weekend is Heritage Days. I don't know if anybody else has any more information that they could share on that?
I can.
Anyone more involved?
Heritage Days is this weekend.
Oh, my goodness.
It starts Friday night. There's two bands and then Saturday, there's music 10 to midnight. There'll be family activities downtown, like fire jugglers. Stay away from them.
Sweet.
And civil war enactment and a bunch of other things. Plus, they'll have free hot dogs at noon down at the riverfront. So, go down, get your hot dog for free and beverages, of course, and Pepsi and water and everything else, so.
I don't know how excited I am about having fire jugglers downtown right now.
Heck, you can hold your hot dog over there. I'm cooking for you. Weather juggling.
Right on.
Too soon.
Anything else, MP team?
Um, we've got Friday Fest going on. I think it's the, is it the last Friday Fest?
Right.
Or second to last, maybe?
Second to last.
Second to last?
I think.
All right. So, if you have your tickets for that, you can still use them. And then Farmer's Market, of course. We're coming up on the end of that, kind of. I mean, September 27th, but still, there's not that many more Thursdays left.
Take advantage of it.
That's all I have.
Counselor?
I'm good.
James?
Uh, next Monday is Labor Day, so council meeting is on Tuesday. Please remember that, folks. Paint-a-thon is gonna be occurring this next week. The city does do one, one house. We do our painting, I think, on, the majority on Thursday.
Thursday.
Uh, weather permitting. So, um, those of you who are involved in groups throughout the community, hopefully you're in, I encourage you to participate where possible with the paint-a-thon efforts. That's all I have. Doesn't look like anyone back here has anything or.
Oh, I had a, I guess I do have one quick thing. I got my, my trash can. I figured we couldn't go on without talking about trash. I got my little survey to fill out and yeah, I mean, I knew what it was and it was pretty easy to do. You just, whichever one you want and send it back.
Make that noise again?
Well, I will tell you.
Interesting.
I will jump in there. I was gonna say something earlier. I had several people say they did it online, Don, said it couldn't have been simpler. So, that, that's.
We're doing something wrong.
One thing that had come up, one thing to, to just point out and remind folks, the fee that's listed on that survey.
Thank you.
Is not an additional fee on top of the fee that's already on your water bill for garbage service. It is in place of. So, those who choose the 35-gallon container on So those who choose the thirty-five gallon container on that survey will have the same charge on their water bill that they currently have on their water bill. That seems to be something that has been missed a couple of times. Now you got me. What do you want?
You just woke up, Don.
I just wanted to say that that should not be their only reason for choosing the thirty-five. And every call I field, I encourage them strongly to go to one of the three sites where we have the carts. They can look at them. There's a two-sided piece of information there that have little bullet points, I think, that are very important to take in consideration before you make your choice. There's also a picture showing an acceptable cart and an unacceptable cart. And I strongly encourage them to look and go look and read the information before they make the choice.
It's it's, it is somewhat a marvel to me that as much as we've discussed it, the two, our media sources have covered it, that there was, there's still some misunderstanding about it.
And even afterwards, there's still going to be some misunderstandings.
One thing I do want to comment on, and I hope it gets reported, is that the thirty-five gallon can, while it is two gallons bigger than the thirty-three gallon can that people use now, that the design of the can, because it's so much more narrow, is not going to be conducive to a lot of stuff that people are currently putting in their thirty-three gallon can. And I think a lot of people don't realize that. And when those cans get dropped off, they're going to be extremely disappointed in the fact that you can't even put a large pizza box in that can without causing a problem. So I want to make sure that that's notated and.
It's on the two-sided form. It talks about that.
But you can fold pizza boxes. Just want to let people know that. You can fold. It's cardboard.
Because it's going to, I think, a lot of people are going to be disappointed in it.
Don't choose on the basis of cost.
Again, I'll read it what Don said. Go check them out. You can go to the library, you can go down to the wastewater treatment facility, or you can go out to Public Works to check it out. So make sure you get yourself informed and find out for yourself and make the proper decision. So you still have time to do that. I just want to also reiterate, too, this is a new school year that just started up, and just want to remind everybody, just be mindful of that. You know, the kids in the morning, I saw some people boogying down Division Street past the high school. They forget during the, when it's a, a school is in session, it's twenty, twenty miles an hour there. So so just be mindful, again, that school is in session and care yourself accordingly on that, or I'm going to send the police chief to your house. Is there anything else before we close? James?
Would point out, the Tamaa Building is still, the investigation is still going on. Possibly the end of the week, the that building, the the investigation on it will wrap up, and the decision-making on what to do moving forward will be turned over to the property owner from the insurance company. There isn't a guarantee on that, but that's, that is, that's what they're tentatively looking. Our staff is working to, with the developer, to, as he gets to where he has control of that building, to get an idea what the expected timeframe is and what steps are going to be, they're going to be looking to do for use, cleanup, and and what they're using that site for in the future. But they do want to make sure, our staff does want to make sure that they work with him to find out what his timeframe is and to make sure that it's moving forward at a, promptly, to try to get that area cleaned up.
I, does anybody want to touch on that? I have one question that doesn't begin with that. No. Where are we at on the drain for the sewer that runs to the river? The one that collapsed, the railroad tracks? Not the water sound? Have we been able to access that?
We had pre-construction today, so they'll start moving in some fencing tomorrow around it. There were some paperwork processes that got in the way of them starting last week when they probably should have been, because it was about eight foot, and that would have been the perfect time to do it. The river level looks like it's holding out at about nine-five, nine-six, which is still going to be good for them to work on it. They probably have to put some stop blocks in there. But I just saw a schedule. I I will forward that in the, my Friday-type update.
Are we still sitting with the same number?
Dollar, what do you mean?
The, what are, I, did we come up with a projected cost?
Yeah. We bid out the 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 permanent fix at two forty-seven, and the the quantities for the emergency repair, the emergency section of it. It was one thirty, or it was one oh-nine and then thirty-six thousand, so we're about a buck for, a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, and there's still some conversation yet with the rail that has to happen, so.
Okay.
Be nice.
Thank you.
Also, before, did you have anything else, James? Before we close out, just just so you know, we're missing a council member tonight, and just want to let Linda Murray know that our prayers and our thoughts go out to you. She lost a family member over the weekend, so just remembering you in our prayers, and that's why she's missing tonight. Anything else?
Amen.
Okay, we're dismissed.